And thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Chucklin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, today we will start with Board of Supervisors matters and we'll take up our first comments from Supervisor Chucklin.
All right, well, busy week on Friday, I attended the tour of the new Eden House, which is a 22-bed bridge housing facility for the homeless. That is a collaborative effort by Self-Help Enterprises, the city of Visalia, the city of Tulare, and the county of Tulare. So, good things are happening there as far as housing our homeless population. I then attended the memorial for Captain Ray Figueroa and firefighter Patrick Jones in Porterville, and again, another shout out to our Tulare County Fire Department who have spent countless hours supporting the Porterville Fire Department. So, thank you to all of you guys. Other than that, that's about it. Tonight, oh, don't forget to vote, and this afternoon I will be at a Mental Health Board meeting, because I need it. Thank you.
Yes, you do. Supervisor Valero.
Well, good morning Tulare County. Lots of great happenings last week and this upcoming week. Just want to share that last week's Public Art Selection Committee meeting was great. I attended along with our Supervisor Chucklin here. Looking forward to reviewing potential murals for this space. Although we received a few options last week, the design aesthetics of those received were not what we were looking for, and so we have extended this invitation again to the Arts Consortium for a more detailed Taylor request. And so, it was great to see kind of those applications submitted, but however, again, looking for a mural for the interior of this A and B, as well as the chamber. So, yeah, it was great nonetheless. And then I tagged along with Supervisor Townsend on the unveiling of the live health online kiosk at the Porterville District Office. Great job to Supervisor Townsend for opening up the event, and also to acknowledge HHSA Director Anita Ortiz, along with Francina Martinez, for organizing this well-put-on event. I held the Seeds of Love event in Dinuba last Thursday, where I was able to recognize Casa, ASO, the American Youth Soccer Organization, El Quinto Sol Harvesting Hope and Dinuba Quihuanas, Robbie Skerdo, the founder of Library for London, provided a great keynote on leadership, and how we do not need to be invited to lead, but instead, we need to encourage people to find their spark. On Friday, again, was a very emotional day, as I too attended the memorial service for Porterville Captain Figueroa and firefighter Jones. A moving tribute and ceremony that warmed my heart. I was in awe of our first responders and the beautiful program they all put together to honor these great men. That evening, I attended the Young Lives Banquet, an event that raises money to continue supporting teen moms through leadership, programming, and support. On Saturday, we held a landscaping project in District Four, and I am so thankful to the Tulare County Fire Team and Chief Norman for your work on beautifying Fire Station Four. The team also made way to honor the teacher who was killed next to the station 16 years ago during a Christmas program with the kids. And so, there is a nice memorial area, which includes two benches and a memorial rock. This opportunity also connected county with Cutlerosi Joint Unified School students for their community service hours. And then, I also like to just pay tribute today to, as many of you know, this past week, these past few weeks have been a roller coaster of emotions, from mountain top joy to valley low hardships. So, let us keep the Carrasco family in our prayers as they mourn the loss of a great man. Rudy Carrasco was a Tulare Western Assistant Principal and Woodlake native, and who was killed in a car accident last week. Rudy cared deeply for our youth of the valley. He and his daughter came out to Rosy last year and volunteered to help with the Yellow Jackets softball program, a program that trains 10- to 15-year-old girls for softball. And so, he was a contributor to that. This week, I will be attending the Peggie's Retirement Open House. Today, attending the Woodlake Awards Night Event on Friday. Attending a planning meeting for the Cutlerosi Resource Fair, which usually draws over 500 plus. And then, I will be participating in Read Across America programs in the communities of Seville and Woodlake. And then, lastly, I'm excited to participate in this year's DC Advocacy Trip, led by our Chairman Vanderpoel, and attending as well will be Supervisor Townsend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, on Wednesday, we had an event where we replaced four train engines with the San Joaquin Valley Railroad. It was over $11 million project, with over $10 million coming from our San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. So, it was a great event. That's going to help clean up our air. I think it's taking out over 317 tons of emissions out of our valley. So, it's tremendous. Those are costly projects, but they go a lot further than many of the other projects that we do. So, it's not often that we do that, but it's great, and we were able to do it in Exeter. So, it was also nice to be in District One. Last Saturday, Lindsey Cultural Arts had their first annual gala. The Lindsey Cultural Arts, they have several murals in Lindsey. They have a little museum, which is our old library that they've converted, and it's a great group of individuals just wanting to preserve local history. And right now, their current project that they're fundraising is to preserve old orange labels. And so, many people like orange labels, and so, they're digitizing them, and they're available for purchase if you'd like, and have a nice little frame. And I think they're pretty reasonably priced if you're looking to redecorate something. Lindsey Cultural Arts has that. Today, this afternoon, the East Cuiya Groundwater Sustainability Agency has a meeting. Next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but the following week, RCRC, I have a board meeting with them, as well as that coincides with the San Joaquin Valley Policy Council's annual trip to Sacramento, where we, as a San Joaquin Valley, we advocate primarily on transportation-related items. So, I'll be doing dual duty in Sacramento on Wednesday. Next day, on Thursday, the 12th, we have tentatively scheduled a Veterans Advisory Committee, County Veterans Advisory Committee. The 14th, the Lindsey Chamber will have their annual dinner, and on the 16th, we will have a meeting for TK. And that's all I have.
All right. Supervisor Townsend.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. As Supervisor Valero mentioned, last Wednesday spoke at the unveiling of the new Med Suite kiosk over in Porterville Government Plaza, or Government Center, I should say. And it was really interesting that that's, it's just a small kiosk that anyone can go into, you can get online with a doctor, a therapist, and they can kind of look at you via online, and you can stick out your tongue and at the computer, and they can give you some, you know, for non-emergency situations, health situations. But I was really impressed that this is a partnership between HHSA and Anthem, and I really impressed, I asked, or someone asked how many of these there were in the state. There were three now, including the one in Porterville. One is in the Bay Area, one is in Los Angeles, and one is in Porterville. And those are three areas you don't hear put together very often, in a sense. So, pretty impressive. And then, also, the same day, there was a groundbreaking for Porterville Unified School District Pathway House, Cross Pathway House. My architectural company had donated the plans that we had also used for a Habitat for Humanity build. The plans were done by students from Harmony Magnet Academy, and then, it's been built once as a Habitat for Humanity house, and now, Porterville Unified Schools is building it, and using all of the student pathways. Many of the student pathways, I should say, are involved in putting that together, including students out there serving refreshments as we did the groundbreaking. So, that's going to be a great thing for the community. It's the second one they've done now. And then, on Thursday, we had our Government Affairs Committee meeting for the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. Always a good meeting to get up to speed on things that are going on federally, at the state level, county level, city level, and also tribal representatives there to give us updates. And along with most of the board on Friday, at the memorial service at Port Naz in Porterville for Captain Figueroa and firefighter Jones. And again, it was just a wonderful, wonderful show from the community. I know that facility, the room that we were in holds 1,500 people. I saw the pastor of the church as I came in the hallway, and he said it was set up for 2,400, because they also had all of the other large rooms and every chair they had in the building set up with video monitors for the service, and also, a couple of other churches in the vicinity did that, as well as the Galaxy Nine Theater. So, there were a lot of people in the Porterville community that were involved in that, but also, people that came from all over the United States, and even some from Canada, to pay these, to pay this tribute. And I was extremely impressed by that. We also, the Rotary Club that I'm involved in, put on a lunch, or early dinner for the first responders that would like to come out. I think about 500 to 600 showed up out at the fairgrounds afterwards, and we were thinking our little Rotary Club of 40 would have a hard time with that, but I think every service club in the area volunteered. There were so many volunteers that a lot of times, I was standing around just talking to people. And also, we thought, boy, this is going to be a huge cost for our club, but so many other clubs and other organizations and individuals contributed, that I doubt if we even saw an out-of-pocket expense by the time the thing was over. So, just a tremendous show of community support there. Yesterday, I attended a Burton School District Strategic Planning Meeting, one of the focus groups that they've been having, and that was, it was a very good time to get together with several community leaders and individuals, came around just to express their opinions on the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities for Burton School District there in Porterville. So, looking forward to the plans that come out of that. And then, we had, right after that, I had a Habitat for Humanity Planning Meeting, looking for our next project now in the Porterville area. And also, chatted with Hopper, Kent Hopper, with Hopper in the morning for his podcast, just talking about, in this case, Man Alive, that's coming up, a men's event, Christian Men's Event coming up in Porterville on March 14th. And today, of course, we get out and vote, and tomorrow, I have the Local Area Formation Commission meeting, LAFCO meeting here. And Thursday, a Complete Count Committee regarding the census over in Porterville, to continue to get ready for that, as well as our East Tully Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. And on Friday, a First Friday Coffee with Porterville Chamber, sponsored by Sierra View Medical Center, and the Foundation Board, which I'm a member of. And on Saturday, I'll be helping with Lions Club judging their Zone Speech Competition Finals. I believe that's high school students, and so, they're down to the final few, and I'll be helping to judge that. And that evening, Zonta in Porterville is doing their Art and Wine Event out at Knuckles Ranch. So, a lot of things coming up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Townsend. So, a few things that I wanted to cover this morning. First of all, I too attended the services in Porterville last week, and just really want to commend the Tulare County Fire Department for their contribution, their effort during this very difficult time. It was a very well-attended event by the community, not just those from Porterville, but countywide, the family really came together to show support for our fallen firefighters. And those are always very, very difficult events when we lose a member of law enforcement or in the fire service, and it's amazing to see the brethren and camaraderie that exists amongst agencies from throughout the world, really, as Supervisor Townsend mentioned. It was a really humbling turnout, and a very well-done service. Also, I would like to reiterate, I hope everyone gets out and votes today. It's an important day, especially for three of us up here. And let's see, a few meetings I wanted to go over that are going to be taking place this week. LAFCO will be meeting this Wednesday at 2:00. This Saturday, at the Heritage Complex, at 6:00 in the evening, the V Tech School will be having their annual fundraiser, which is a denim and diamonds event, and that will be a nice night, and I look forward to being a part of it and helping it to be a successful one. Washington Advocacy will be taking place next week. Look forward to a busy week, and it gets even busier for me, because we have scheduled Retirement Board Due Diligence visits. We will be investing in a real estate debt classification, and I will be partaking in that trip as well. So, I figured while I'm on the East Coast for the board, I might as well stay back there and do some other work for the Retirement Board. So, I will be going to New York, and then to Dallas, and then back home. The Greater Cuiya Groundwater Sustainability Agency will be having its monthly meeting Monday at 1:00 at the Cuiya Delta Water Conservation District Office in Farmersville. Wednesday, March 11th, at 8:30, the Retirement Board will be having their monthly meeting, or bi-weekly meeting. And the Investment Committee will be meeting at 2:00 at the Tassara Board Chambers as well. And that's all that I had to specifically go over today. We will now move on to Item 3 on our agenda, I'm sorry, Item 2 on the agenda, which is a request to acknowledge those Tulare County restaurants and retail food establishments who have attained the Certificate of Excellence in Food Safety Award during the 2019 calendar year. And I will call forward our Director of Environmental Health, Nelsa Gonzalez. Good morning, Nelsa.
CAO Britt, County Council. My name is Nelsa Gonzalez, and I'm the Deputy Director for Environmental Health, which sits within the Public Health Branch of Tulare County HHSA. So, this is always a fun, exciting time for me to come and sort of highlight all of the great work that our businesses are doing throughout the county. So, just to give you a little bit of background about the program, Environmental Health started implementing this program in 2010. Back then, we had less than 100 recipients of this award, and this really goes to show you how much the program has grown throughout the years. In 2019, we will be awarding 447 businesses in the county, which really is just a great amount of work that's being done out there. So, our goal is to, of course, recognize those food businesses which have consistently maintained exceptionally high standards in regards to sanitization, operational, and structural standards, and assuring that the maximum protection of the public's health and safety is always at the forefront. We also recognize those folks with a beautifully designed award certificate that is designed in-house by one of our public health staff, and I have that further in the slides. And then, we encourage those businesses to display the certificate at their business. So, you'll see a lot of the restaurants or food facilities with the certificate over the years. It shows consistent excellence. We also highlight those folks on our website and also through social media. So, there is that media component with the program as well. So, this is what the 2019 award looks like, the certificate. And it is, I go out all the time, and I see these regularly out at the facility, so it is nice to see. So, what is the criteria? So, what do folks need to do in order to be qualified to receive one of these awards? First and foremost, they have to be considered a permanent food facility. These are brick-and-mortar facilities within the county. They also have to be engaging in some sort of food preparation, so whether that's in regards to handling of food at schools, at full-service restaurants, bars, coffee shops, those type of businesses. They also have to be in good standing with the department, meaning that they don't have any enforcement actions pending, that they're not being written up for notices of violation, and that sort of thing. And then, they, lastly, which I think is the really hard part, is that they have to have at least a 95% or above three consecutive times. So, that falls within the excellent range of our scorecard, and it is something that is hard to achieve. So, we want to focus and encourage the efforts of all of our food operators on food safety by providing this award. We are also wanting to lower incidence of possible foodborne illness outbreaks by encouraging an educational and motivated food safety culture. A lot of the work that our inspectors do is education, and so, we're out there providing that service as well to all of our businesses and their staff. And then, lastly, we want to recognize and reward all of the hard work and the effort that's being done on a daily basis by these men and women within the food facilities that continue to do an excellent job. So, what I did this year is, we have a packet available for the public, but there's also an attachment to your presentation, and they, all of the winners are listed by city. So, what I did was a summation of all of those cities, and of course, you could see that our larger cities have more businesses, and that's why their number's greater. But it's really great to see also, a lot of our small towns that are achieving the same sort of excellence in their food safety operations. Oh, yeah. At least.
Yeah. In the city of Strathmore.
At least, yeah. And then, we decided to dive a little deeper into our data, and so, we wanted to see, okay, out of all these people, who are folks who are getting 100%, which is really hard to do. I mean, that's like, every little thing that could, you know, that could go wrong, never goes wrong. Like, they are just exemplary. And so, I wanted to identify those folks. So, we have 25 schools in the county that have received 100% three consecutive inspections in a row, and those are all listed here.
All I have to say real quick is that Allen's Worth has 100%, and that's the only food establishment in the community.
In the community.
Shout out to Allen's Worth.
Yes. Yeah, and as you can see, they're all over, so it is really cool to see. And then, looking at our food facilities that were not schools, and we had 11 businesses in Tulare County that achieved 100% three consecutive times. Several are from Porterville, Tulare, and then are a couple from Visalia. But that is like a wild, well-oiled machine. It's really hard to do. And in all honesty, you know, you never know what you're going to find when you're out there doing the inspection. Something could go wrong, and facilities, you know, may not have any idea as to why something occurred that day, but these folks have just consistently been on top of, on top of all of the things that they need to be doing out there. And so, like I previously mentioned, we have 447 food facilities that we're going to be recognizing today. We did send out a postcard invite to all of those businesses, so if I have anyone in the audience that is representing any of the businesses today, if you could please stand to be recognized. And it's something they should be very proud of, and not just as business owners, but, you know, all of their staff. It really does take a team to achieve this type of excellence. Thank you, and that's all I have this morning.
All right. Do I have any comments from my colleague Supervisor Chucklin has chimed in?
Yeah.
Go ahead and call him.
First of all, Nelsa, thank you and your staff for doing what you do and going out there and doing these inspections. And thank you to all of the establishments who make sure that our citizens are kept safe. We hear every day about Salmonella and E. coli, and there's just so much out there, potential hazards to our citizens. So, again, thank you for your diligence in making sure that folks are safe. I do have a question.
Yeah.
It's kind of related to this and not.
Okay.
But I'm seeing a proliferation, so to say, of carts out and about in the city of Visalia, in our unincorporated areas here, fruit vendors, and barbecuing corn and all of that stuff. Where are we with that? Are those permitted?
So, we do have 400 permitted mobiles in the county, and those range anywhere from carts, like churro carts, cut fruit, all the way up to like a full-food gourmet truck, like a taco truck, or what have you. We also have seen a huge increase in unpermitted vendors throughout the county, and I just want to say that that's not something that's unique to Tulare County. We really are seeing it across the states. I am regularly on a call with the other directors in our region, and every county has been hugely impacted by this. So, what our process is for that is, anytime we receive a complaint, whether it be through the website, a phone call, or somebody comes into the office, they submit a complaint with the location of the vendor. Sometimes, they'll have photos, so that's helpful to us if they do. That gets entered into our database, and then, we assign an inspector to go out and respond to all of those. And our inspectors respond to 100% of the complaints, regardless of whether, you know, the time or day it is. I have coordinated many sweeps with city code enforcement, with city law enforcement. We had a huge one over the Christmas parade where we confiscated over 500 pounds of hot dogs. And so, it is something that we coordinate and we do often.
What did you do with the hot dogs?
Yeah.
At a barbecue?
We discarded them.
You discarded them, right? That's good.
We had a party. No, I'm kidding. We discarded them. So, it is something that we do routinely, but I absolutely recognize that now that the weather's getting nice, you see them everywhere, and it is hard to control.
You know, and I think the, you know, of course, we want people to establish businesses and to make a living, but the safety, when you see, you know, a jar of mayonnaise sitting out in the sun, or fruit that's on ice, that we don't know, you know, where it's been prepared, or how it's being kept fresh. So, I appreciate the effort.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I have a request from Supervisor Valero.
Yes. So, I would also just like to say thank you to the food establishments that are here for your tireless work in providing cleanliness, safety, and performance. I know that this is no easy feat. My parents run and operate a restaurant out in Dinuba, and, huh? No. Hey, we work hard in trying to keep our performance. But again, for those of you that are here, we thank you. And also, just want to echo Supervisor Chucklin's comments about the proliferation of some of these street vendors, because we are seeing an increase in those, especially in the Dinuba area as well. So, what we can do here at the county to encourage that they follow the process in order to make things happen.
All right. Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, I just want to also thank you, Nelsa, and also Sonia, for helping out putting this together. And I noticed there's about 116 restaurants in District Five, so congratulations to all those that made the list. That's awesome. And then, the schools, I just wanted to point out especially, because we do have some members from Burton School District here today. Wave your hands out there, all you Burton people. So, congratulations for your schools that are on the list there. Thank you.
Supervisor Valero wants another bye. Supervisor Valero wants another bite at the apple. Hopefully it was kept refrigerated. Go ahead.
It was on ice.
It was on ice, okay.
No, so just for clarity, so your responsibility and job in your department is not to go out and start looking through social medias and trying to identify. Your job is when you receive a complaint, you go out and do the work, right? Because I guess there's some confusion where it's your responsibility to be kind of the Ghostbuster and go out and, but, but it's not until the people file a complaint that you then go and do the work, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that is our, our process.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the, is that only during the week that you're responding to? Or is that weekends included? Because I, I want to make sure that, you know, I know that there's a process to be followed to, in order to react properly. But sometimes that process may take too long and the concern should be addressed sooner. So you're kind of getting a consistent sentiment from board members because I, I too get comments from all over District 2 as well. I mean, it's, it, there is a proliferation throughout the county and I think it needs to be addressed because one of the key points that hasn't been mentioned, I think it's important, is that, you know, here we are honoring all of the food excellence and food safety award winners who have brick and mortar businesses and who have to pay additional fees for permits, inspections, and have a higher cost of doing business. They are having business potentially taken away from them by these vendors that aren't playing by the rules and that don't have the same level of cost. So it's creating an unfair situation of competition. And I, I think that just for the wellness of all Tulare County consumers, we have to make sure that we are creating a fair playing field as well.
Right. And it definitely is a higher risk to the public's health. We, through the summer, we had inspectors assigned weekend duties where they would go out and they would be on a rotating shift. And that occurred all the way through October. And so we definitely adapt to the situation whenever something unique arises. If we are seeing a huge influx on Saturdays and Sundays, we have had inspectors respond on the weekends for sure. They are also out there doing community events. So if there are scheduled community events on the weekends or the evenings, they're also paying attention during those times as well because they're already out in the field.
Do we know why there's such a proliferation throughout the state? Has there been any opinion given?
Yeah. You know, what I've seen just over the past years is that it's very common for somebody to bring in folks and drop them off in our county with carts, leave them on the corner and have them sell their product throughout the day. Previously also, we've been told, you know, a lot of these vendors are afraid to say who's dropping them off, so we don't get a lot of information. And a lot of the times, they're still responsible for the dollar amount that they have. So if we confiscate that food, they're still responsible to pay a certain dollar amount to the person who dropped them off. And that's what we're seeing more and more of is some people coming in from like LA, dropping off a bunch of people at different locations throughout the county because it's all sort of the same exact cart model type, the same exact menu. There are a lot of commonalities with that, but that's what we've been noticing recently.
Okay. And, and really just want to compliment all of the award winners. I think that it says a lot when you look at a program that's been in existence for basically 10 years and started off with less than 100 recipients. And in a 10-year period, we are now up to right around 450 award winners. That's a, that really says a lot about how much the industry respects environmental health and, and having that certificate up there. I, I think it's really important for consumers and for public health in the county. And I know it takes a lot of work to meet that consistency. I'll never forget going along on some inspections with you guys and what you encounter and what you write down is definitely stuff that we need to be paying attention to as members of the public. So as you are out there and if you see this certificate in a window, it's definitely reassuring to know that you can go in there and eat and feel safe about what you're consuming just based on the effort that restaurant puts forward in handling food safely. So those are my comments and I see Karen approaching the mic, so.
Nilsa, real quick, if I'm out and about quite a bit on the weekends, so if you could deputize me or, or anything.
I'd love to do that.
Save you on some overtime and, and all of that, so.
Yeah. You got the job, for sure.
She can be intimidating. Yeah, go, go ahead.
Karen Elliott, Public Health Director. And Nilsa, I know filled a lot of questions regarding the unpermitted vendors, which is something I just want you to know that hasn't brought to our attention a lot. And we are trying to find, you know, a way to approach it. And what I want to also just point out is it's very difficult because, again, I think as she was saying, it's a lot of people who are dropped off. They do not provide proper ID. We don't know how to find them later. It's difficult to enforce when you really can't do anything in terms of some of the penalty or whatever you want to put towards it. So it's something on the weekends that is happening, you know. So we don't have the workforce at this point or the probably best work plan for it, but we are looking at it. So we are trying to, you know, develop some of these, you know, options. So please know that we are aware of it and it's not a difficult thing to address, obviously, because a lot of times when you see the people, they're gone by the time they, they show up. But it is something that we will continue to work with you on in bringing some ideas on how to address.
Great. Thank you very much. Any of the food establishments like to make comment that are here today? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on, on our agenda and now take up item three, which is public comment. I do have a request from Sheriff Mike Boudreau to make a public comment and I'd like to call
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, County Counsel, good morning to our board. Good morning to everyone. I know I have three minutes, which is difficult for me. I'm going to try and throw it into three minutes, but this is an important subject. Two things really fast. On their last comments, we actually have a human trafficking team, which consists of sex trafficking as well as labor trafficking. We're very aware of what they just discussed and we're actually working cases. So just to make you aware of that. Secondly, I did not see the Bob Wiley Detention Facility Kitchen anywhere on this list. So we serve really good food. We want to make sure that you're aware of that. I'll make this quick. It's important to me to come up before the board today to recognize someone. You guys had mentioned the fire in Porterville and the tragic loss of our firemen, both of which were personal friends of mine. And so it is a difficult time, but there's something I saw that you guys didn't see. And if I could have Chief Charlie Norman come up front for me, please. Chief? There's something that I saw that you guys didn't have a chance to see. I responded as quickly as I could to be by the side of my friend. He was the man in charge. Typically, I go to scenes and the sheriff is the guy in charge. This was a different arena for me and all I wanted to do was to be next to my friend and provide resources if any it needed. I actually became, he became my boss that night. But what I did see is a style of leadership and a man who knows what he's doing. I couldn't have been any more proud of this man being the Tulare County Fire Chief and the actions that he took that night. He was coordinating with not only the sheriff's office and public safety, but the Office of Emergency Services and multiple, multiple different emergency services and fire personnel operating in an environment, to me, which just appeared to be chaos. I saw the chief being the leader that night, standing with OES and the Incident Command Center. And he was organizing like a well, like a well orchestrated orchestra. There were so many things taking place. And I told him later that I just couldn't be any more proud of him. And I think for the citizens of Tulare County as well as the board, we need to recognize him for the efforts that he did that night. And he took leadership, he took the role, and the Tulare County Fire Department were an amazing group of personnel that really made a tragic situation somehow organized. And so I just wanted to take the time this morning to present you with a little something from me as sheriff, to you as my friend, as well as the Tulare County Fire Chief, as one of the phenomenal leaders in a situation that was so chaotic, but you brought calm. And so Chief, I just want to present you today with a little. Yeah, thanks guys for taking it out. And these are the two firemen. And I knew Rick Figaro and I knew Patrick Jones. And at the top, really, this is for Charlie Norman. It says, "To Chief Charlie Norman, Tulare County Fire Department, in recognition of your outstanding leadership in the moment of tragedy from me, the sheriff, to you." So God bless. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you very much. Chief, you want to now take up some public comment time? You're welcome to.
Ironically, I did have some things written down, so I, I wouldn't blubber. Thanks to my folks, Joanne, Joe, Kevin, Pete, Pete, Jeff and Jeff, Pete, Pete and Jeff, my command staff, all my battalion chiefs, those guys and gals are just lights out. I just, I couldn't have handpicked a better team to go into the face of chaos. And this is, and I appreciate it, Mike, so much. I really do. And your friendship and your leadership meant so much to me. But this is about Porterville. This is about Jonesy and FIG. And this is about helping Dave at his organization get better. So can I have two minutes? All I had is, when we got done with the scene Thursday night, I felt like I had to say something to my folks. And so I put together one of those Jerry Maguire memos that usually gets you fired. You saw how that worked out in the movie. It says, "Brothers and sisters, CCFD colleagues, good evening. I want to provide some reflection and insight on the tragic event that unfolded in Porterville over the last few days. Our rule completely changed on the afternoon of February 18th as the library incident unfolded with devastating consequences. The loss of our two brothers is very fresh and this is an event that no organization, industry, or family should have to endure. The upcoming week will be challenging as we reflect, plan, and remember and plan for the services of FIG and Jonesy. First of all, I want to thank all of you that have been involved in this incident. Your hard work and commitment to supporting our cooperating agency during this time of need has been overwhelming. Your efforts have been stellar and the fulfillment of our mission truly exemplify why we chose this career path. Your amazing courageous efforts do not go unnoticed in these times of sorrow. Over the coming weeks and months, we will work to assist in recovering the well-being of our department members and our brothers and sisters in the Porterville Fire Department. You have my commitment that we, that all of our affected personnel will be supported in recovery as we strive to return to a sense of normalcy. This will be the toughest venture of all due to the exigent nature of our industry. With the nature of emergency services, it can be challenging to press the stop button at work. This can be the equivalent to your doctor saying, "You need to reduce stress and get more sleep." Good advice, but harder to put into practice. On a great note, I am so encouraged by the support of everyone, and I do mean everyone, the public, our fire department, our law enforcement core operators, our county family at all levels of the organization, and many friends, family, and former coworkers. I left the incident this afternoon and it took me over two hours to get out of town. I had so many Porterville residents talk, share, cry, most even hugged me in regard to this tragic event. I was so impressed with the community of Porterville and the large amount of support they have offered. I only wish I could do more. I would like to share a quote from our 16th president, Abraham Lincoln. "I have been driven many times upon my knees by the overwhelming conviction that I had nowhere else to go. My own wisdom and that about me seemed insufficient for that day." This statement was made prior to the turning point in the Civil War. A great president, a great leader that was completely overwhelmed by circumstances at the time. I apologize for rambling nature of this email. What we all have suffered is an emotional event coupled with extreme sleep deprivation. Together, we are a great team that has experienced a significant loss that will require some, require some time and effort to overcome. Please forgive any typos in this correspondence. Our goal is to provide exceptional, exceptional service and ensure that we all go home safely. All of you, in my thoughts, prayers, and well wishes, take care of yourself, take care of your colleagues, and most of all, contact me if I can help you in any way. Sincerely, Charlie." Thank you so much. Thank you for the support. I can't say it enough. You're a great board to work for. These are great colleagues and we will help Porterville recover as well as my own personnel. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Well done and well said, both Sheriff and Chief. We're lucky to have such wonderful people protecting us and keeping our community safe in Tulare County. Now I will continue along with public comments that I have a request for. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please do keep your comments to that time constraint. We have requests for specific agenda items. I will call those up at the appropriate time, but just in general, public comment, I would like to call forward now Diana Marie, family of Gruber. Can you please turn that microphone around? We'll have someone help you.
Thank you very much. My Christian appellation is Diana Marie. I am here to read into the record what I have already submitted to the board and I'm just confirming it. So I'm just going to read it straight in and if I'm not interrupted again, I won't be able to do it in three minutes. Date, on this, the 18th day of the second month in the year of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, 2020. I, Diana Marie, family of Gruber. First-class matter in care of general delivery, Goshen Post Office, Goshen, California, Sovereign State of the United States of North America. My domicile is Section 13, Township 18, Range 23 East Mount Diablo Basin Meridian. To the public record, County of Tulare, Board of Supervisors, 2800 West Borough Avenue, Visalia, California, 93291. In regards to Default Resource Management Agency Building Permit Review Planning Permit Number 81901150, May 16th, 2019. On and for the public record, whereas I, Diana Marie Gruber, have not received a written response from the governing body of the County of Tulare regarding the deficiencies of permit, and this is a typographical error I am now going to correct on the record. Permit number incorrect is 19001150. Correct number A1901150, of which were outlined for the public record on the seventh day of the first month in the year of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, 2020. Whereas 30 calendar days have passed and therefore the governing body for the County of Tulare has defaulted. And therefore said default is hereby entered on and for the public record on this, the 18th day of the second month in the year of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, 2020. My seal is attached. It's been affirmed and recorded with the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Richard Wilmer Gruber.
Good morning. Excuse me. I have the same typographical error that I want to correct for the public record. It's read the same way. The question I want to address right now is to Deana Peterson. Counsel, is this a administrative or a ministerial time?
I don't give legal advice to the public.
Then I'm going to have to assume that this is a ministerial time unless otherwise corrected, that I'm entering this material into the public record.
You, you can direct your comments to, to me. The county council serves to provide legal advice to the board supervisors and other county.
Well, if you want to assume that position, then I'm going to ask you, is this a administrative or a ministerial time for me to add things to the public record?
Sir, I, I appreciate your comments and your sentiment, but I do know that you have already been speaking with the Resource Management Agency and there has been follow-up. And they have received legal advice and have been in conversation with our county council's office regarding your situation. So please refer to that correspondence and that communication with that office.
I didn't receive any correspondence from them.
Maybe it's verbal then.
Verbal isn't written correspondence. It's not correspondence.
Sir, I, we don't, this is for your, your time to provide comments to. Sir, we don't, this is for your time to provide comments to the board supervisors. We do not interact with you during public comment. I'm just giving you some feedback right now to help guide you along.
Well, then you're not assuming this responsibility in import. County council's the only one that can, and essentially county council is stated that she can't. So I'm going to assume this is the time for addressing the public record.
You have 50 seconds remaining, sir.
Then there is no time limit on the public record. I just wanted to let you know that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional public comments this morning? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning. My name is Samuel Hernandez. My address is 16072 Blyt Avenue, Ivanhoe, California. I am from the Ivanhoe Community Council. I am the member-at-large from the community of Ivanhoe. Do you have a couple of questions? So we did launch our newsletter, which is the Ivanhoe Soul, and we are doing a monthly newsletter. And some of the things that we do want to update our residents is on a couple of projects that the county had already approved. There's supposed to be a crosswalk on Road 159 and Avenue 328 that was suspected last summer. So we were told that maybe sometime in the spring. So I'd like to give an update on that, if there's, if that project is in the agenda to be established anytime soon. And also, there's a start, if there's a start date on the sidewalk for Road 160. There was supposed to be a sidewalk installed, starting from, I think, Walter Avenue all the way to Blyt Avenue, so.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I will have someone from the Resource Management Agency follow up with you immediately after your comments.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just one comment also on the food vendors. Where do they use the restrooms? I see them standing in the corner. That's one of my concerns is, I see those people out there in the hot and sun, and it's like, where do they use the restrooms?
Thank you for your comments. We share your concerns. Okay, next, we're going to bring it back to, first of all, is there any other public comments this morning? Okay, thank you very much. We will now take up our consent calendar, items five through 12. Item six is going to be removed from the consent calendar and brought back at a later date. Are there any additional items to be removed or corrected as recommended by members of the board or members of the public?
Not to remove, but I'd just like to make a comment on item five.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, that one is to, we're basically changing up from a type three down to, I mean, type one down to a type three fire engine because of the cost increases. And I just wanted to kind of make a mental note to ourselves that we need to address that on the next go-round, to see if there's some way that we can make sure to get the chief and the department what they need as opposed, they're doing a great job with using what we can give them, but I really love to look at, seeing what we can do to give them what they need.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Any additional comments? Okay, Chair will entertain motion at this time.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. We will now go back on our agenda and take up item number four, which is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to review and accept Tulare County's 2019 Annual General Plan and Housing Element Progress Reports.
Chairman.
Dr. Bach.
No.
Oh.
It's only Dr. Britt.
It's only Dr. Britt. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
They don't call us doctor. We just merely have our JDs. Again, Eric Bach, Tulare County Resource Management Agency Assistant Director, and Chairman, Supervisors, Dr. Britt, Deana Peterson, Counsel. Before you today is Tulare County's 2019 Annual General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report. This is a requirement of the government code, and we will give this report to the Office of Planning and Research, hopefully today or tomorrow if the board approves it. So what are some of our general plan accomplishments over this year? We initiated the Kingsburg and Tulano area plans, the SB2 land use, which this board just approved, to move forward. Under that grant funding, we'll look at our land use planning framework element, environmental resources management. We'll also look how to incorporate CIGMA. It's mandated that we update our SEQA for transportation and circulation under SB 743 to look at vehicle miles traveled instead of levels of service. And we also look how to incorporate adaptation and resiliency into our safety element. Community plans were approved this year, Ivanhoe, Plainview, and Woodville. We obviously just approved the Lemon Cove Community Plan as well this year. As far as the 2018 Climate Action Plan Annual Progress Report, that was also approved, and we looked at the increase in 273 units. But regardless, lower emissions were projected in the cap, and so we're on track to achieve our GHG goals below the 2020 target. There's quite a few alternative energy projects completed, 452 residential solar projects, 18 ag dairy solar projects, and four other commercial solar projects with 9.98 megawatts of generating capacity. Other accomplishments include the Tulare Area Land Use General Plan Amendment to include Darrell's Mini Storage, and the Exeter Area Land Use to include Loftstead, which was adopted on November 19. General Plan Implementation, Goshen Village East Final Map was approved. And just to give the board a little bit of a heads up, we, the self-help project was not able to carry forward on its bond funding, so we are looking to assist them in getting a $6 million grant to try to bridge some of the financing for the second phase of the Goshen Village East. The Gateway Development Agreement was adopted by the board on June 4, and the Anderson Village Community Facilities District was adopted on June 25. So over this last year, we've accomplished in achieving other fiscal ways to move projects forward. Complete Streets, we were awarded by TCAG three additional complete streets this last year. And since 2013, RMA staff has completed 16 complete streets programs with 24 roadways designed to 30%, and we're starting to see some of the fruits of that labor in actual infrastructure projects for these communities. So these were the community plans that were approved by the board and the general plan amendments over the last year. And here are some of our other major development projects that were approved by the Planning Commission and by the Planning Director. Another Goshen Village was approved at the beginning of the year, and that has moved forward. We talked about some of the financing districts and development agreements. One thing I did want to bring to the board's attention is that last year, the Planning Commission did approve the 400-unit Schmie Home subdivision in Goshen. So we are definitely trying to increase our arena numbers as quickly as we can. And outside of that, we've moved forward on a lot of composting, solar projects, and been assisting some of the cities and/or the mutual water companies in moving forward to get infrastructure funding through SEQA, approval by the board, and/or project approval by the Planning Commission. Our bridge program is obviously moving forward very quickly, and that helps us achieve our circulation element of the general plan. And we have done a few amendments to our zoning code. I think this is a little bit of prep for what's going to probably move forward in the future as far as zone changes. We start with our kennel standards. Obviously, there's some development standards that need to be updated. The zoning code for the Foothill Combining Zone allows for additional accessory units, and the building code was adopted, and updates to the fire code were adopted this last year. Again, SB2 grant was approved today. Tulare County Housing Element from 2015 gives us until 2023, until it needs to be updated again. We've incorporated many of the goals of that housing element over the last five years, and we have worked with Strategic Growth Council to a very high degree to get the grant funding to update our community plans, including this recent Metheny Track Climate Adaptation Plan. Infrastructure Development Priorities Matrix was created as part of this SB244 studies, so we do have a pretty good idea of where our communities sit. And as we go forward and update and use this SB2 money, we will use that matrix to see how, what types of feasible improvements can be made. So we'll have a really good sense of that moving forward. As far as housing element accomplishments, new construction, 225 units, which is up about 75-plus units from last year. Demolished 114 units, so we're plus 111. Again, much better than last year because of the Kingsburg project. We have new homes being built without having to demolish old homes. So it's a good start. We also have a project moving forward in Pixley, which has been sitting around for quite a few years, 30 units, and I believe they have six out of the ground already. We've been working, we wanted to also bring to the forefront HHSA's homeless programs, their major accomplishments as well. We'll report that to the state. It's stuff that's been said quite a bit over the last few weeks, but we'll also report that to the state as part of the housing element accomplishments. So that completes staff's report. If you have any questions, Dave, did you want to come up in case, did you have any questions?
Any questions from board members? Okay, no questions. We can open the public hearing. Actually, I should have opened it earlier. Sorry, Deana. But the public hearing is open and has been. And I do have a request for a public comment from Blanca Escobedo. Would you please come forward, Blanca?
Good morning, Board. My name is Blanca Escobedo, Policy Advocate for Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. We just wanted to raise some concerns or seek clarification for some of the housing element progress. First one is Table D. It's titled Program Implementation. Programs 1.1 and 1.2 are supposed to help two families each year on rehab and homeownership assistance until 2023. The status statement of those programs does not say how many families were helped in 2019, or even how many since the program was adopted. Furthermore, the status statement for Program 1.1 states that the program has slowed down on actively pursuing grants to carry out the programs without explaining why. Furthermore, for Programs 3.3, the status statement does not specify if four grant and loan programs were applied in 2019 for employee and farmworker housing as stated in the program's objective. Similarly, in Program 7.2, it commits to apply for four grants for sustainability and weatherization, but the report does not state how many have been applied for in 2019 or in total since the housing element was adopted. Program 9.2 discusses an annual training designed to increase PUD and CSD capacity with grant funding, but there is no mention of the training occurring in 2019. It just says county personnel, including board members, attend training when it is available. It also does not discuss whether grants were sought out to host in 2019. The county should revise Table D to include specific figures that are responsive to the program commitments to help a specific number of families or apply for a specific number of grants. If either objectives are not met, the county, we think the county should state clear reasons why and state how it will meet its commitments in 2020. There is time for the county to make these revisions prior to the April 1, 2020 deadline. And furthermore, we just want to also commend RMA staff and the Board of Supervisors for their active involvement in the Ivanhoe Community Plan Update this past year, and for hosting public meetings in Ivanhoe, at the Ivanhoe Community Council meetings to carry out Programs 9.4. And we hope for this continued traveling meetings to various communities to hear directly from residents. And on that note, lastly, we also want to commend the county for being proactive in developing the environmental justice element, and we hope that there is robust community engagement and outreach and accessible opportunities to provide direct feedback, such as translation services and proper notice before such feedback and workshops, so that we can hear directly from community voices. And also, one last thing, for the Metheny TCC grant that was awarded last year, we also are proud to be working with the county on this, and we hope that there's more TCC grants that are pursued, because we have been hearing from residents directly since then. And, you know, folks in disadvantaged, unincorporated communities want clean energy, and they want access to programs that will make them more resilient to climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional public comments this morning? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board supervisors for action. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, a second by Supervisor Shuckley. And please vote. Motion passes unanimously, 5 to 0. Thank you very much. Riveting presentation, Mr. Bach. Next, we'll move on to our untimed portion of our meeting and take up item 13. It's a presentation given by the General Services Agency regarding the Visalia Feral Cat Coalition for a Trap, Neuter, and Return Program at Mooney Grove Park. Turn it over to Brooke.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt and Ms. Peterson. I'm Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Assistant Director. And joining me here today are Diane Dunbar and Lisa Kukala from the Visalia Feral Cat Coalition. We also have our sleepy volunteer in training, Madison, and she's getting good training on taking care of feral cats at Mooney Grove Park. So we're here today to discuss a proposed new agreement for a Trap, Neuter, and Return Program at Mooney Grove Park. First, we'll give you some background on the program. Then we'll go over some of the key points of the proposed agreement. Then we'll discuss some of the new techniques that we'd like to explore to ensure effective management of all the cats in the park. So in May, we entered into an agreement with the Visalia Feral Cat Coalition, which I'm going to abbreviate to VFCC, for a Trap, Neuter, and Return, or TNR, pilot program. And since that time, the VFCC has been responsible for all activities associated with TNR, including trapping, transportation, veterinarian services, sterilization, and flea abatement for feral cats at Mooney Grove Park, as well as finding homes for kittens or any non-feral cats found in the park. The purpose of the original agreement was to humanely and effectively stabilize and gradually reduce the park's feral cat population. After four years, the VFCC has accomplished this goal at no cost to the county, relying solely on dedicated volunteers. During this time, they've also been very responsive to us, and I've seen them transform into a well-organized, respected, and collaborative organization. So now I'm going to turn it over to Lisa or Diane, who are going to highlight some of the program's main accomplishments, as well as some of their organization's other accomplishments.
Well, as Brooke stated, one of the main accomplishments that we're very proud of is we've been able to maintain the number of feral cats at Mooney Grove Park since our first initial May 16 pilot program. So that we're very proud of. Along with this, we've, we've come across many, many volunteers that are interested. So we are monitoring the park one or two times a day, the cats, every single day, to make sure they are healthy and tip deers. And this is our actual president of Visalia Feral Cat Coalition.
Yeah. We're just very, very proud of Mooney. All the cats are healthy. They, I don't know how to say it. We're just, that's our crowning glory, because the cats, the level when we started in 2013 trapping out there was over 100 cats, and they were sick. And just through TNR and natural, you know, causes, the cats now are down to 20, and they keep other cats out.
When you walk into the park, I'm sure you hardly see a cat. And if you do, it's one or two. And if you do, it's one or two of them walking by. But as a group on our whole, since we've been a nonprofit since 2014, just this year, we've, or in 2019, we've spayed and neutered 1,700 cats.
Amazing.
And to date, it's well over 3,000.
Thank you. Also, not to go unnoticed, they placed 200 kittens up for adoption in 2019, and those did not all come from Mooney Grove. Very, very few kittens are found at Mooney Grove anymore, because most of the cats there have been spayed and neutered.
We are also working with the Mobile Home Park that is adjacent, trying to help get that under control, because it affects the park.
So in an effort to, I skipped a slide, sorry about that. Over the last year, we've been working closely with the VFCC to modify the initial agreement to assure that program goals are mutually beneficial and get to a point where we're ready to recommend adopting TNR as our standard practice for managing feral cats at Mooney Grove. And we do believe we're at that point here today. The proposed agreement was also reviewed by the Parks Advisory Committee at their last meeting and was voted unanimously to bring before your Board today for approval. The proposed term of the agreement is three years, with an option to renew an additional year, up to two years. So if approved today, the agreement could potentially be active for a total of five years. And the new goal of the program is, that was pretty important to us at the county, is to attempt to relocate feral cats away from the visitors and county facilities to ensure that the program does not disturb normal park activities or pose a threat to park patrons, employees, or county properties. Next, we're going to discuss some of the potential strategies that we've come up with together to do that. But first, I'd like Diane or Lisa to tell us a little bit about the two cats pictured on this slide.
Well, these two cats live over next to the museum in Lion's Country. This is Tappy and Parker. They're boyfriend and girlfriend. They are spayed and neutered. I think we had spayed and neutered them in 2014. Parker, since, the male, has passed away. He passed away in 2018. So Tappy lives alone in Lion's Country.
And this just kind of shows the example of the daily feeding. So volunteers come out daily to feed the cats that are at the park, and they stay until they've eaten, and then they take and remove the bowls, so that they don't leave the mess behind. So the volunteers stay, they feed the cats until they've eaten, and then they take the stuff with them. So in an effort to relocate some of the cats that have taken up residence in areas of the parks, such as museum structures, the radio shop, and the maintenance shop, we're proposing three pilot programs. And although the programs are not interdependent, they may run simultaneously to increase their likelihood of success. The first is a housing structure pilot program. And through that, we'll work with the VFCC to place cat housing structures in mutually agreed-upon locations around the park. And the idea is that those structures will be away from areas of frequent public use and camouflaged, hidden, or placed in such a way to avoid being visible to the casual observer. And the VFCC will build, I think Lisa's husband is actually going to build these structures, and we'll be able to provide input on them, and they'll do that at no cost to the county. Also in tandem is a relocation pilot program, where the VFCC will identify cats which reside inside or amongst the structures, the museum, or other unsafe locations. And if feasible, the cats will be relocated to another mutually agreed-upon area in the park. And lastly is a deterrent pilot program, where we will work together to identify humane cat deterrent methods and agree, both of us agree to test its use in areas of the parks where the cats either damage park resources or interfere with public enjoyment, such as on the museum grounds. So I'd like to invite Lisa or Diane to add anything that they'd like about those three pilot programs, and also tell us about the cat pictured on this slide.
Well, we, like you, we know the park is for people. It is not for the cats. That is why we're trying very, very hard to control the cat population and decrease it. I know the museum and all the other structures, I know the cats aren't wanted there. So like Brooke said, we're going to work very, very hard to try and relocate these cats within the park where visitors don't visit as often. This cat in the picture is, lives at the bridge. Her name is Gray Mama. She's been there since 2013, and I think after her third litter, we were able to remove all those kittens and spay and neuter her. So I think, I think she had made probably 16 kittens, and we moved every single one of them. But we are going to work very hard to try and get the cats away from the museum. We think there's around four in there. So we're going to work very closely with the staff and you guys and Brooke.
Also, yesterday, Lisa was telling me about a cat that they've been trying to trap for many years that lives in the museum, that they finally caught. So will you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yes. Diane actually was the one who trapped him. And intact male, of course, he's going to be roaming and fighting at this time of year. And we were able to get him to a vet. Now he is neutered. He is having to recover. He had holes in his face and his neck, and it was really bad, but he's going to be fine. But that, now we'll be able to work, okay, he will try to go back to the museum. We're going to try to direct him to the woodpile. His urine won't stink anywhere near. And if we can get those other three cats in there.
This is a cat that lived in the museum that we would see for three years, trying to catch him. We will trap every cat in that park. It's the last thing we do. We finally were able, because it is restricted in there, we were able to kind of lure him, shaking bags of cat food, and finally lured him out where he discovered he could eat there. And that's when we trapped him.
And hopefully, we can move, get them feeding on a regular basis, if we're allowed access, and then start moving the feeding station over and get them to the woodpile. And then make sure we have the museum locked off.
Yeah, good.
So I think that story really illustrates the importance of allowing some flexibility, which we've worked into the new proposed agreement, so that they are able to trap all of the cats at Mooney Grove. It will really be important for the program to truly be successful, and also to maintain the health of the cats, as well as them causing less damage to the structures, the museum in particular. So before I conclude, there are a few people that I want to make sure to thank for helping us to get to where we are today. Cassie Hefington from HHSA Animal Services offered her guidance and expertise on the topic. Patrick Hamblin also helped us reestablish a very productive working relationship with the VFCC. Margaret Erickson from County Council, not only for helping us draft the new agreement, but for taking a true interest in the program's success and helping us arrive at creative solutions. Carrie Amador, who's the General Services Analyst, and she did a great job making sure all of our efforts were coordinated and we stayed on track. The VFCC volunteers who go out to Mooney Grove every single day to take care of the cats. And last, but certainly not least, Lisa and Diane for being so open-minded and collaborative. They've both been an absolute pleasure to work with. So will you tell us about the two cats pictured on this slide as well?
These cats live over by the woodpile. They are siblings. We, we TNRed them in 2018 together. They were just kittens over there. We, we do notice, I think we had removed a couple of their siblings. Some of the cats do come over from the Mobile Home Park. They wander, they'll have their litter, and then they'll go back. So we definitely remove all those kittens born in that area.
And they're taken, we take them, tame them, they're given a health check, and then they're sent to rescue, so.
Good.
So in conclusion, our requested action before you today is, first, that you receive our presentation. Second, that you approve an agreement with the VFCC. And third, to authorize the chair to sign the agreement. And just to clarify, that will be effective the date that it is signed. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I know we have a question from our lone feline on the board. All right. Supervisor Shuckley.
Yes. So all you need to do for a guy is shake a bag of food, and they'll come running, right? So I will too.
It took three years.
So for that matter. First of all, thank you very much to the Visalia Feral Cat Coalition. You know, I know it's been a bumpy ride the last few years, but thank you for sticking in and continuing to go out to the park daily and do what you do. I know that you provide flea control also, which is a big help.
On a monthly basis.
What's that?
On a monthly basis.
Monthly. I know there's a gopher problem in the park. Do the cats help with that at all, either you or Neil, if you have any comments on that?
I wouldn't think they would.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, again, I think, you know, for the county to have this organization who's willing to go out there every day on a volunteer basis and provide what you provide, is kind of a no-brainer for us, or at least for me, to support what you do. And my last question is, can you guys do any, can you trap and neuter and the geese? Or, no, I'm just kidding.
Wish.
No. But again, thank you very much, and I am in full support of this.
Any further questions or comments from board members? I just want to thank you both, Diane and Lisa. Appreciate the presentation. I know that this is a subject you are very passionate about, and one thing that was absolutely a problem at Mooney Grove Park is now not so much of one, and is something that's definitely much more tolerable, and you're in a reasonable effort and should be achieving your goal very soon to eliminate the cats really from patron interaction. I think that's a really, really positive thing. So I'm in agreement with Supervisor Shuckley and wish we could figure something out about the geese, gophers as well. But I do have to commend you as well for naming all of your cats. We've had our cat since 2015, and it's still Kitty to my kids, so. It's funny, whenever people ask what the cat's name is, it's Kitty. All right, that's all. I've got any comments from members of the public? Rhonda, do you have any pet comments? I know you really like cats as well. Is there, do you guys have a program that works around human resources offices? Because I know that we have a feral cat population there. Or no, those were actually Rhonda's pets. Okay, Chair will entertain direction. I do have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank Brooke and Carrie for everything they've done working with us.
Oh.
Thank you.
That's great. Great job, Brooke and Carrie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on, take up item 14, which is a request from the Board of Supervisor staff to receive input and provide direction regarding the 2020 Tulare County State Legislative Platform and the 2020 Tulare County Federal Legislative Platform. Julieta Martinez.
Good morning, Board, CEO, Council, and Deputy Clerk. Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff for your Board of Supervisors, here to bring you two draft documents for the federal legislative platform and the state legislative platform. Just to give you a quick rundown, I did not provide my 50-page PowerPoint. I apologize in advance. Today, you just get me. And so we will start with the federal legislative platform. I'm going to quickly highlight these documents, as they were made available to the public or in your packets for review. They have missed an odd page somewhere, but we will go through the documents. And of course, I invite any direction, changes, and suggestions you may have before we finalize today. So if it's okay with you, we'll begin with our federal legislative platform. And just to let you know, we always try to build off of what we've done in previous years, any changes that have come down the pipeline via federal government. We work with our federal lobbyist, Mr. David Wetmore. And of course, our departments are always asked to chime in. So for federal platform, discretionary funding was something we added last year, and we made some tweaks, because there are some suggested changes coming down the government funding debate. So for this year, and it's written in the description, that there is robust funding for grant programs that support county-funded services. However, moving forward for fiscal year '21, there may be some proposed eliminations or reduction of funds for services important to county residents, one of those being SCAP. And we'll talk about that later on, because it's also in our platform. So no major changes there. As far as forest management, and I'll highlight more details as far as the state, we are continually seeking help with communication with our federal government, our state, our Forest Service, and our local government, because I feel like every time we go back to DC, we aren't always on the same page as far as what our Forest Service needs, what kind of management we need, surprising, I know, what the county can do and how partnerships can help us move forward. So a lot of this work was done with our fire chief. We have the local task force, and we have Ms. Cindy Singlenau, who's also focusing on forest management. She's not with us here today, because she's working a pole side in Pixley, and we appreciate her volunteering. So a lot of it is allowing for fuel removal within the Giant Sequoia Monument. Something new is to protect the Tulie River Reservation's natural and cultural resources, as well as the tribal housing and infrastructure. That was a new addition. We, we know that this is also an issue for our Tulie River Tribe. We hadn't actually added it to our platform in previous years. This past year, we've had great progress in more open communication with them and trying to assist each other in our needs. And so building off that partnership with the tribe and making sure that they're incorporated in this, because they're part of this county, what happens to them is affecting us as well. Moving on to libraries, thank you to Darla Wagner, who provided some feedback, and I very appreciate that. But the key to this item really is the very last sentence that says, rural access to the internet is critical to our citizens, as more services are primarily available online, including government sites, job services, educational assistance, and resources, paying bills, et cetera. So libraries really have transitioned over the years, and they have become a community resource for many who don't have internet at home, who probably need high guidance on different things they might need. And so our libraries really have become community partners, especially for our disadvantaged communities or just those residents that need further assistance in simply checking out a book. And so any opportunity to try to get funding or continue in funding, I know we talked about adult literacy, and I think that's in our other one, is a huge program that we have here in the county. We have that group come forward every year, so just continuing to support our library and the extended services they provide. Moving on to infrastructure, we've basically grouped them together, local match, definition of rural, farm-to-market. This is always in partnership with TCAG. It's something we've plugged every year. We thought we were closer to getting kind of some changes last year. I think we, we aren't there yet, but still working for the effects positive and other effects that ag can have on the county. Just like highlighted under farm-to-market, we have so many trucks traveling through our county, and at some point, it does damage the roads. I don't know if you caught the news the other day, but Tony Boland was giving us a plug for all the hard work that's done out there and all the potholes we patch every month, because I don't think people realize that the county is still responsible for the roads that are heavily traveled, and we do need assistance to keep up. So that will continuously be on this platform, unless, you know, other direction is given. Payment in lieu of taxes at the state and federal level, we push for it every year. Funding for next year hasn't been released yet, but it's been consistent in handing out every year. Secure rural schools. We go back and forth, the last time for authorization. The last time it lapsed, 2016, the county's decreased funding by over 80%. So this is something we argue for every year that the county wants. It's set to expire again, so this is one of the push that we will suggest to make next year when we're talking to our, next week, when we're talking to our delegation. Same with state criminal alien assistance program. That has stayed on our platform, and we continue to advocate, because we are nowhere close to really getting the funding to recover our costs. And so one of the biggest highlights that's been going on these years is that there are a lot of duties, programs, mandates, federal and statewide, that we have to carry out, and no actual funding given to do those duties. SCAP is one of those that we can highlight, where we're nowhere near the funding allocation that we need, and are now at risk of it being taken away completely. And again, we would turn to our wonderful CIO to help us figure out where we're going to get that money to cover those costs. So always trying to recoup for the services we're already providing, are glad to provide, but need the government to work with us, higher government to work with us. Subsidance in the current Subsidance in the Frye and Kern Canal. I did, I do want to add that in February, the Bureau of Reclamation released its funding allocation plan for the fiscal year '20 funds. Frye and Kern subsidance work will receive 11 million. However, that's really, we are grateful for that sum, but there's a lot of work to do. As you may recall, SB 559, which is being held in the Assembly, was the state's attempt to try to move some funding forward. It's a two-year bill, we're gonna see what happens this year, but that is still very much on the radar. It is something that affects more than just this county, and we're working in partnership with Valley Delegation to get this moving forward. Success reservoir enlargement, we've made great strides. It's moving along, we just want to keep nudging the Army Corps and everyone to move on an appropriate timeline as it's listed. It's taken over two decades. I know a lot of you attended the Richard Al Schaefer Dam naming. It was great, I'm sure he's excited to see this moving forward, but we don't want to stop the momentum that we've picked up in this year. Trade is something we've left on there, it's just a general consensus that we're always supportive of it. I know we just signed a couple important agreements that we were supporting last year, but anything that helps imports and exports and the cost to our growers, we will be behind. Lastly, in the federal platform, water supply recharge projects. You know, we heavily advocated for Temperance Flat Dam and other similar projects. A lot of changes had happened, they got some funding, wasn't necessarily what we wanted. I know there's a group still trying to carry forward, but the issue of water supply recharge and storage is not going away. In general, we want to support anything that moves these type of projects forward. And that is the last item we have on the federal platform. So at this time, if you have any suggested changes or additions to this document, I'd gladly take your feedback.
Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's excellent. I think it builds on some of the things that we've done in the past. I do have a couple of additions for the federal platform for consideration. One, there's been an issue with infrastructure nationwide on all aspects, but I think as part of the environment and natural resources portion, specifically asking for infrastructure improvements within our public lands, and specifically calling out Sequoia and Kings Canyon National Parks, as well as Sequoia National Forest and Sequoia National Monument. I think that it's important that we're, you know, there's local dollars that are generated, specifically in the national park, and making sure that those dollars stay local so that they can make improvements to their road system, their water system, to the whole visitor experience is important for us. The other item I'd like for consideration is in light of the minimal rainfall and snow pack that we've had this year, as of date, and I hope it turns around, but we, I think it's imperative to make sure that we are supporting dredging and cleaning of our waterways and our water storage facilities during dry years so that we're minimizing water loss. And I know there's been, there's been efforts to that, but the permitting takes a while for anyone to get a contract to be able to clean up our lakes and to make sure that our riverways and our canals are appropriately cleaned so that they have the maximum storage capacity. And if we can do that in a dry year, if, you know, hopefully this year isn't a dry year, but if it were, this would be an excellent opportunity where you wouldn't have to release water in order to do work, because it'd already be low, you know, low waterfall. So making sure that we're maximizing those opportunities and that the federal government is moving quickly, I think is something that's worthwhile to advocate for.
Supervisor Valero?
In addition to our rural schools, I know that's been something that we've been thinking about, but I would like to also look at the potential to support federal financial participation in local community technology advancements. So supporting enhanced broadband service to rural schools or rural communities, and then also to support legislation to provide funding or business incentives to assist companies in bringing broadband service to underserved and unserved areas of our communities.
Okay. Any additional considerations? Okay, on to the state.
Thank you. So this is the more fun one, the state legislative platform. So again, I'm gonna dive on in, take any suggestions. If you have to pause me in the middle, I've been told I talk a little fast, so go ahead and stop me in between. But starting with agriculture, dairy digestion program, no major changes there. It's just always a continuing support, and thank you to Tom Tucker, who's given us feedback over time, carried on all the wonderful knowledge Marilyn has given us. Anything we need to bring up? A minor change on the second item, invasive species, invasive species, probably got that wrong, trying to make it a little more general to include other issues that may come down the pipeline. So we did glance over California Agro Commissioners and Sealers Association, they also kind of let us see their platform too, any issues they may be watching, this is one of them. Always trying to minimize the risk of these species while always being considerate of groups, advocacy groups, communities, who also want us to use the most precaution, make sure we're not affecting others, the air, so it's a true partnership, just making the language a little bit more general for potential legislation that might come down the road. Environmental and natural resources. So numbers four and five, I'm gonna tell you right now, we're probably gonna combine those. I think we got really happy writing everything out in the, really the same item. But it goes back, thank you to Chief Norman again, Nancy, the task force who worked with Denise, and kind of just highlighting everything that's happening with that. Part of the reason we wanted to add more requests to the platform and more general language is, as you may know, there is a resiliency bond that may be coming, that is coming in November, SB 45 amended by Allen, it's Wildfire Prevention Safe Drinking Water Drought Preparation Flood Protection Bond Act of 2020. If approved by the voters, it would authorize the issuance of bonds in the amount of over $5 billion pursuant to the state general obligation bond law. And it would finance different projects that this county would very much be in support of trying to propose applications for those grants. There could be changes coming to this bond, of course. I think after Super Tuesday, depending on what happens with the education bond too, they think that there might be attempts to either combine them, increase that amount. We won't have assurance till maybe later on this month, but when crafting pieces of this platform too, we wanted to take that into account, because after all, this is the board's kind of policy and guidance to departments and everyone else knowing this is what we're vying for this year. It allows us to move quickly on important legislation that's gonna affect us in the near future. So just kind of to add to the thought process behind when we were adding all these comments. I'm gonna skip ahead to item, skip 18, Williamson Act. I know we've been doing good, thank you to the assessor, Mr. Washam for chiming in. Comments were made the other day during his presentation about adding some contracts. There is legislation proposed right now, AB 2632 Patterson. It would appropriate an additional 40 million from the general fund to the controller to make some subvention payments to counties. So keeping this on the platform to help us try to vie for that funding. Moving on, item 23, public noticing process, I'm gonna highlight, because that was an addition, and it's really up to your board, yea or nay. It was a discussion we had about attempting to work with the lobbyists to make efforts to either find an alternative to publicizing legal notices in the paper, or either doing both for the county and just make us more transparent and find a way for people to see our notices. So that's new, that's something to consider, and really, their request is support legislation or advocacy efforts to allow for online posting of public notices as an alternate solution to newspaper publishing and the cost associated. Some counties don't have a lot of local papers around anymore, or they have other bigger companies and not a lot of competition, and the cost can really get high. And as you can tell, I don't know that we've ever had a meeting where we don't have a public hearing that wasn't noticing a paper. So it does add to the budgets for those departments, for the CEO and the clerk of the board's office. So just kind of something that prompted us to make that addition, but again, we can have more discussion. 24 was another one. Again, it was a suggested addition for the board's discussion, Public Records Act. This came as a question from CSAC, the California State Association of Counties. Working with certain counties on a review of the Public Records Act, while everybody agrees that transparency is key in local government, I think the act has evolved so much and has been really used as a tool to target specific counties' advocacy efforts in the legislature. It's been used as a tool by members of the legislature to ask for different type of information from counties. The concern is that it's putting us in a pickle sometimes. There's constant legal review, making sure we're not violating any privacy, employee rights. One example that came up, and I don't have the bill name right now, it'll come out probably within a week, is the borderline shootings. They're going through a potential PRA lawsuit right now, which is they, you know, were trying to release the autopsies, media wants the autopsies of all these victims, but it had medical information in there, the county was claiming was confidential due to HIPAA and other rules. And so families were threatening a lawsuit against that county, should they release those autopsies, media was claiming due to PRA, you know, they have that right to ask for this information. So there's very different incidences in different counties. So CSAC is really right now just trying to ask the question of counties and considering a workshop in May, is there issues that maybe we can just kind of review what the purpose of the act was? You know, has it gone a different route that maybe is putting people and providing a financial burden? That's kind of the background. Again, it's just really open for discussion, it's up to this board if they would like to make it a priority, it's really in the beginning stages. 25 is also a new addition, something that was just discussed, trial court security, and it's really another state-funded mandate. It's another cost to counties that we have to cover, but we're not recuperating it with realignment funds. And as you know, we opened a courthouse not so many years ago in Porterville, we have the new jail there. Of course, we need more security there because we're operating both, that the county will cover, but we're not fully seeing those funds coming back to us. And so with that, I will move over to Health and Human Services Agency. Number 28, just a quick highlight, I actually got some information recently, County Veteran Services Officer. There is a bill moving forward, AB 2668 Cervantes, it's to increase the funding for county veteran services officers. It's state funding increased from 5.6 million to 11 million. So keeping that item and just supporting the increase in that funding to these officers, and really, it would enable counties to hire more veteran service representatives. And it just says that the demand from veterans is outpacing the available staff at the CVSO offices. I mean, this board went as far as to create the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, which has been a great move, and they are now meeting, and we have veterans from around the county to discuss, you know, where are those gaps in services and how can we fill those gaps? And of course, additional funding is a great way to go. One last thing I'll really highlight, thank you to Solid Waste for their feedback on 44, the last item. We kept that on as last year because recycling is still gonna be an issue at the state level. That was a lot of the discussion that we had, and a lot of the industry is saying they're seeing a lot of increased costs in households and commercial businesses, and the biggest issue is, how are we gonna help the disadvantaged communities? Because those are also gonna go up. So this is affecting all, and you've heard it from our haulers too, who will bring their fees at some point in the summer, trying to offset the cost of increase to them, finding a solution, and that's a conversation that's gonna be happening this year at the state level. It's probably gonna be one of the priorities during CSAC's Legislative Conference in May. So that's a quick highlight of the packet, but I entertain any questions and suggestions you may have at this point.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Julieta and staff, for putting all these together, the work that you're doing there, and specifically for the addition of the Giant Sequoia National Monument adjacency to the tribe. I think that's a good addition. And also appreciated Supervisor Crocker's additions for the infrastructure statements, local dollars, and also the dollars to dredge clean rivers, canals, lakes. I think that's a good add to that. On the state, I just had a couple of things, I like all of it, but on the resiliency bond, the support for the resiliency bond, I would personally like to see us take off supporting the bond from the legislative platform, leave all of the, basically the asks that we have without specifically supporting the bond, only because I think we can achieve that through existing revenues and not have to put another burden on taxpayers to repay additional bonding. And that would be page five, second bullet, under resiliency bond. Page eight, item 14, the third bullet. And page nine, item 16, the first and fourth bullets. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you. I've got quite a few items. I don't necessarily oppose if we wanted to change the bond issue, just to touch on that first, but one thing that's different about statewide bonds is that, and one of the reasons I actually kind of like it, is that it forces the state to prioritize spending that back. I recognize that they still have to finance the spending, and so that it becomes a lot more expensive than rather than using just general fund dollars, but they're forced to pay for bond projects first, so that the primary priority is there, and they can't shift that to some other program that they might otherwise. So food for thought. As far as agriculture, the Air Board has really been pushing to support increased funding for the farmer program. Farmer program provides incentives to replace tractors, replace equipment, and for our agricultural users, for our farmers, and it's something that's really important, and it seems like every year, it's a struggle to get dollars for that, but that's something that I would like to see added. We're advocating as a district already, but it would be great to have us, and RCRC actually has taken a strong policy stance on that as well, just this year. Also, and this is somewhat similar to my comments on the federal platform, is I think overall, I just want to give kudos to all the staff that helped out with creating this and providing input. I know that in years past, there haven't been as many departments that have provided input, and this year, we're seeing many more departments provide input, and I like that, I think that's great. Many of you are involved in statewide associations, you're discussing upcoming legislation, you're discussing priorities, and I think it's very helpful for us to hear that so that we're all on the same page and making those same comments. So I, again, I appreciate that this is a much more expansive platform than what we've had in the past. But specifically, we've had conversations with the California Conservation Corps about having a presence here in Tulare County and expanding that, and having something specifically with Porterville Developmental Center and utilizing state property, and I think that would be a great ask to make sure that we're asking for that specifically, and, you know, and making sure that we're trying to, again, get some additional resources, help us with forest health. And on that same line, as we're looking at drinking water, having specific asks for allocating SB 200 funds to Tulare County, we know we have lots of different projects and priorities. I don't know that I'm necessarily, I don't think we need to list specific projects, because there's so many projects that we have, but just stating that we have a need. And so working with the state as far as which projects would be the highest priority, I think that's very fair as far as doing that. As well as, one thing that we, when we met with, I think it was Cal EPA, last year, we were talking about having a regional administrator to help with some of our small districts with their, you know, organization and helping to facilitate running their small systems or small water systems, so asking for that, specifically saying, we're a perfect area, we've got a lot of water systems that could use help. water systems that could use help, and you could place one here, and we'd be happy to work with them. I know that there's been efforts, on the water supply side, there's been efforts recently with the Trump administration approving new biological opinions for the delta. And I would just like us to take an opposition efforts to the, for any efforts that are restricting flows through the delta. And, you know, specifically the Attorney General's lawsuit against BiOPs. That's something that, you know, that's going to be a critical point for our communities and for our farms, and I think that's something worthwhile, even though I don't think we typically oppose things. It's more on the positive side.
Just to add briefly, Denise England, our Water Resource Program Director, is actually working on a resolution that will be brought before your board on Tuesday, March 17th. So that will be coming to you in two weeks.
Excellent. On the public noticing on item number twenty-three, and I know that this was mentioned in a past board meeting, but I think the hesitancy I have with that is that legal notices are really the lifeblood for our local news publications. And if we remove that option, we're essentially, you know, killing our local journalists or whatever we have, our local publications. And I think there's a benefit to that. And so I'm not, you know, if it was an "and," then I wouldn't be, you know, I don't know that there's anything opposing us to post things online already. I don't have any problem with us posting more. But I think that there's other benefits, societal benefits, to having local newspapers outside of just the cost that we incur. On the transparency, the Public Records Act, I think we've stated we're pro-transparency. So I'm, again, I'm hesitant on that, but I think you brought up some good points as far as supporting efforts that protect our personnel records and sensitive information. I think, I do think that's worthwhile. And I know that we've had issues just this past year on some of those things. So if we're limiting it in those respects, then I would be fine with that. I have several questions. I'll come back to items, and I assume they're from HHSA. And I, it's probably just because I don't live in the MHSA world every day, and so just some clarification as far as what's proposed, what are some of the issues as far as why this is? I know I spoke with Jason a little bit about that yesterday, and he did share some information, so it makes a little more sense as far as where we're coming from, but I would be supportive of that. On thirty-five, the tobacco use, you know, my grandfather was a smoker, he died of emphysema. I'm anti-tobacco personally, but I just don't see that as a priority for our county. When we have so many other issues, I don't necessarily see tobacco as one of them. I think there's other, if we wanted to look at specific types of illegal drugs or opioids or something along those lines, I think those are actually more valid than tobacco. So I'm not necessarily supportive of having that specifically called out without anything else. And then there were things that just weren't on there that I'd like to bring up in addition. I know there's discussion and efforts about Proposition 47 and 57, and so any, I would support any efforts to repeal or amend those two props. The same thing with AB 5, supporting any efforts to repeal or amend AB 5. As we've, Supervisor Townsend mentioned, the positive working relationship, I think you did as well, as far as working with the tribe. But specifically, they have an ask for their casino relocation, and I believe they're going to need a new compact. And so supporting that effort, we've gone through the MOU, we've worked that out, we've had a great relationship, and so just calling that out specifically and supporting their efforts. We heard from the assessor not long ago about split role, and I think opposing any efforts for any type of legislation on changing the property tax system and Prop 13, I think is also worthwhile. And I don't have anything specifically, and possibly when HHSA comes up, maybe they can mention this, but I just feel like for our foster youth, we're their stewards. They have nobody else. And I don't know what we need to do, but I just, I feel like we have a burden for them to make sure that we're taking care of them and that we're giving them all the resources they need. So any type of effort to try and support them, I think is really important. And then lastly, I'll just state that on the broadband for all, RCRC, that's been a huge priority for us, so I'm very supportive of Supervisor Valero, what he mentioned. The governor also mentioned that at the last year's economic summit, that he was going to have an initiative for broadband for all. And NACO, it's also a priority, and they have an app called the Tested App, and you can download the app and you can check what type of connectivity you have, internet connectivity. And they use the data to advocate at the federal level for the need because there's a lack of internet access around there. So they're actually encouraging people to download it and then go to some remote area like Springville or something and say, oh, there's no internet up here. So that's something that they're supporting. Thank you. That's, I think that's it. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. I now have a request from Supervisor Valero.
And before I begin, I just want to echo Supervisor Crocker's sentiments with regards to our foster youth. So just making sure that we can bring attention and more focus on that and ways in which we can improve for our county. I'll also just mention the possibility to improve public safety and enhance overall criminal justice system, so improve all aspects of the county's criminal justice system. And the reason why I say this is because it's coming from the state where we're seeing an increase in rehabilitation rather than incarceration. So making sure that we are, at the county, are at the forefront of this through expanding support services and programs that prepare incarcerated individuals to successfully transition back to community. And then how we can also maximize uses of technology that advance public accountability but also employee safety. Another item, which I don't know may fall into federal as opposed to the state, but which is Public Works, solid waste, support legislation for the development and implementation of product recycling programs. And also, I would like to see if, again, if supported by the board, to oppose any legislation which would impose new solid waste disposal requirements on local government unless the funding mechanisms needed to implement the requirements are provided. I know that we recently had an issue here in terms of having to increase some fees, and so, yes, the federal government is continuing to impose these regulations. However, no funding is coming across. So something to do with Public Works and solid waste. And then also, emergency management performance. So I know we have like force management, but I would also like us to see funding for flood preparedness activities and hazards which are a vital component for local emergency management programs, and the continuation of funding which is essential to assist in ensuring long-term preparedness and protection of our citizens from potentially devastating floods or other disasters.
Supervisor Shucklin?
Yes, thank you. I see on our state platform many items related to homelessness. I would like to see us, especially when we go up this, in the next couple of weeks, that we really stress to our local legislators that we need their help in maybe carving out some funds such as what happened in Merced recently, where their assemblyman was able to get them a nice chunk of money for some capital projects. They are now in the process of putting together a navigation center. So that's something that I would like to see us stress.
I know that there was one ask specifically in there, and it wasn't necessarily highlighted, but that went specifically to that end. I do think that, yeah, in Section 37, it was on the list of items that was mentioned that we would be making a specific ask for infrastructure, for housing-specific functions. I think that that's a really important part of our platform right now. I know that one of the real weaknesses that many organizations that are trying to help address the homelessness problem or finding is the lack of money available for housing construction or for shelter construction. And I think anything we can do to get a specific allocation to Tulare County for that purpose would be very beneficial. But I think that between my colleagues and the items that you covered, Julieta, I think we've pretty well addressed any subject that could be brought up in the 2,200 bills that are created in the state legislature. So I don't think there's really too much else to highlight. I think that I'm in agreement with the majority of the things that were said. I don't think that, you know, we really need to be making many changes to what has been presented. I think there can be additions to it. I know that Supervisor Townsend mentioned the lack of support for a bond, the resiliency bond. And, you know, I don't know that, you know, I'm completely committed to taking that off the table in totality, but I do think that there's significant funding that exists already that could help to address the issues that we're trying to achieve through such a resiliency bond. But those are my comments. Anything in addition from anyone? Supervisor Crocker?
I'd just like to ask if HHSA could just talk briefly about some of those items as far as what the issue is. I know that the commonality is supporting flexibility of funding for MHSA funds, but if you could just provide a little background?
Absolutely. Thank you. And hitting on, I'm sorry, Tim Lotz, Health and Human Services Agency Director. I'll probably rely on a couple of my staff if the board might have some specific questions on a particular item, but I did want to kind of put out there broadly, echoing what Supervisor Crocker said before on more items coming forward. I want to thank the board for considering some of the Health and Human Services specific items. Normally, the agency's kind of flown under the radar in terms of a lot of our legislative asks. However, I feel with the Newsom administration and the California Legislature, many of our programs are really, have been pulled into the forefront. And there are a lot of proposals out there that do impact agency operations and then therefore impact our local community. And there are some concerns about losing some of our local control with some of these initiatives, particularly with the Mental Health Services Act or MHSA. We recognize that the reform in MHSA has been badly needed in a number of areas. The challenge we have is counties have been the convenient scapegoat, I think, for challenges with the MHSA program at the state level, in part about responsiveness of how quickly we can get the funds programmed and allocated to some of our providers, but then also on the effectiveness of those programs. Sadly, we're operating within the guidelines that have been laid out by the state, and we're trying to be responsive. We have worked through our respective associations in the past to argue for more flexibility on those funds. And the items that we brought carried forward here really are a reflection of the dialogue we're hearing in Sacramento, the need that we recognize, how do we adapt locally? You'll notice particularly Criminal Justice Services and Substance Use Disorder Services within Mental Health Services Act, that's badly needed reforms because that's where we're treating and providing service to a lot of people that would benefit by leveraging those MHSA dollars. We could do more. Our concern is we don't want to see broad sweeps of those monies because from what the state's discussion is, they could be then reallocated toward homeless programs. There's no guarantee that it stays here, and based on other homeless funds, I could pretty much guarantee a good portion of it would get swept and diverted to other counties. So our goal here was to try and start some of the dialogue to how do we preserve these monies? How do we put ourselves in that discussion? I know Donna Ortiz and Natalie are standing by to talk specifically on questions for MHSA. Listening though, because I took a lot of notes from the board's comments, I wanted to hit briefly tobacco. I hear your concern, Supervisor. I think where we put that in there and tried to narrowly define it was on vaping and e-cigarettes. Nationally, as we know from a number of months ago, there was some pretty significant concerns about increase in vaping among youth and some of the health concerns, particularly respiratory resulting from that. The specific pieces in here was very specific toward the e-cigarettes, although again, if the board would like to see that removed, we certainly can pull that out. Our public health staff work very hard and are dedicated to continuing to do outreach on all tobacco use, the risks, et cetera. Foster youth, I really thank you guys for bringing that up. That is an absolute critical area that we're working on. Over the years, the state's done some reform, AB 12 expanded how long we can provide services to some of our foster youth, recognizing that some of these youth, a lot of these youth, don't have what a lot of us had, which is that supportive family structure to fall back to financially. You're navigating having rent, you're navigating having job responsibility. There's always a need for more there, and I think that's a great discussion. We would be thrilled to have about what that looks like and how might we try and advocate for more funds from the state and federal level. So with that, if there are specific questions on MHSA, I will turn it over to Donna Ortiz.
Real quick, before we leave the e-cigarette specific requests, I just really wanted to thank HHSA. I know that you have so many different programs and areas of interest within your agency, and you, like many other county departments, really did come to the table to put forward asks and areas of concern that you think the board can help you address through our advocacy efforts. And while it may seem minor to be included in the platform, I think it's still important to have in there because it allows us to bring that up and to voice a position on the part of the county in a quicker fashion because it's already been included in our platform. And so I'm in support of leaving that there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't necessarily have any questions specifically. I think, Tim, you answered them. So I just, I think it was more on the challenge part that maybe we just reworded some of those things where I was a little bit confused, because I recognized the need for the solution and appreciate, and I know the governor had mentioned that in the state address, that if you didn't use them, then he was going to wipe them away or swipe them away or whatever he's going to take them. So I recognize there's definitely a need, and I also appreciate the comments about the vaping. And I must have glossed over that, not recognizing that was vaping specifically. So I'd be supportive of keeping that in there as the chairman stated.
So thank you, board. Tim did a fabulous job summing up the MHSA issues, but I would just like to add on behalf of the agency and our community that the governor is relooking at MHSA and how that will be funded moving forward. It's part of his initiative to deal with the homeless, criminal justice, and the emergency room clutter, if you will. With the current structure of the Mental Health Services Act funds right now, it's divided into five different parts. The Community Support Services, which currently supports all of our housing projects, and the Prevention and Early Intervention Funds, that does just what it intends to do, prevention and early intervention. And my fear with this legislation, although we tremendously support it, it's part of our initiative, the agency is an initiative for whole-person care, we would like for our board... We would like for our board to advocate on behalf of MHSA as they relook at the MHSA funding streams and make it one big pot of money so that we can leverage innovation funds, which we've had a very difficult time spending over the years because of the complex requirements around how you can spend it. So that's the only thing I wanted to add. I think there's an opportunity for us to address the administration, to make it one big pot, and let the counties decide what funding gets to be disseminated based on local needs.
And, and just to add to that point, Donna, I think that, you know, even though there's the, the five mini walls up within the pot, I think that we can make examples outside of the innovation piece because it is very constraining, as to how we have utilized funding in each of those various subject areas very successfully to help address mental illness within our county, and, and so we can advocate in, in a fashion that would show those areas will still continue to be addressed, we just don't need to have the specific limitations to that funding in order to be sure they will be spent on those various subjects. So I think it's a very reasonable request, and I think we can add that to what we're advocating for.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Anything further? All right. Julieta?
So I'm going to quickly try to summarize the additions or suggested changes we did to the state legislative platform to make sure we're not missing anything that was mentioned. So the first thing was under agriculture, adding something in reference to the farmer program. Farmer is actually Funding Agricultural Replacement Measures for Emissions Reduction Program, and there is an allocation of $193 million per fiscal year through fiscal year 2022-23. So in conjunction with the air board, I think it'd be a great addition. Mr. Paul Yoder, who is our state lobbyist and assists us in formulating this lovely document in our advocacy trip, also assists the air board, so he's been a great resource too to find more information that we need on these topics at hand. I'm understanding we're going to keep 35 tobacco with, add more detail into the vaping and mention that as well. Broadband for all, of course, similar language as we used on the federal platform that Supervisor Valero provided. We can work with HHSA to kind of make general language about assisting foster youth to make sure to just add some broad language for any legislation that can come down the line. Again, Prop 4757, you've heard our DA, I think he came about a year ago, talk about the concerns about the changes and all the misdemeanors, so we'll add language there. Split role as well. AB 5, I know Supervisor Crocker brought it up. If you're not familiar, the independent contractors, it was approved by the government in September 2019, requiring company workers to be considered as employees, went into effect this year, January 1st, 2020. Some of the impacts are to companies like Uber, DoorDash managers who are currently recognizing as contractors. Those are some of the well-known to the public. There's also the trucking associations who have heavily invested money in fighting this. That's something to be seen. I think the legislature might try to come back with exemptions or different options, so bills will be coming forward this year. Criminal justice system, Supervisor Valero, thank you for your comments about improving public safety and aspects of the criminal justice system. We have touched base with probation. I feel like it ties back into the fines and fees. There has been a lot of requests from the state, one on the fee area, and your board opposed SB 144. That was one form that was coming down on us last year, and it's another state mandated program where they were saying, "We're going to take away your fees, but we're not going to give you funding, and now you have to add needs assessments, and we're going to raise the population to juvenile justice to potentially 19 this year." So that's just one example of kind of refor, reforms trying to be done at the state level that are coming back to us. So I also had Public Works Solid Waste building up on the recycling, opposing new solid waste legislation on the federal and state side. Emergency managing, management performance, and I believe we said that we are okay with the PR request, but maybe make a little bit more specific about supporting the efforts to protect our personnel and confidentiality. Is there anything maybe that we didn't touch base on? And before you complete this presentation, I do want to ask, we are planning an advocacy trip, a federal advocacy trip, March 9 through 12 for the board. Our state advocacy efforts will be done on Wednesday, March 18th, at State Capitol. So at this time, I also ask you to mention any priorities you may have in the form of request or conversation as we are scheduling this meeting. Supervisor Crocker already mentioned the dredging on the federal platform, but if there's any specifics or just conversations you want to make sure that we are having next week or the one after, please share them with us as well.
Well, Supervisor Crocker?
No, I, I'm sorry, we have a request from Supervisor Townsend. I didn't mean to look over you, buddy.
Yeah, that's okay. No, did, let's see. So I, I was just following along. Did you mention the casino relocation support that Supervisor Crocker brought up?
Yeah, no, I didn't, but we will add that on. It is actually AB 2238 math, it's, it's Tribal Gaming Compact. He's brought that forward in mid-February, so adding that language to the platform, we will also produce a letter in support of this bill to our local delegation.
Okay.
And then one more question, resiliency bond. I think there was mixed feelings about keeping that actual term in the platform. Do you want to remove and just use the language we have there?
So my, just to reiterate what I was, what I was saying, I appreciated Supervisor Crocker's comments about it causing the state to focus, but I'm, I would still be opposed to supporting the bond because it's additional, again, additional monies that are there. I think we could, our efforts would be better spent maybe to just keep, keep on the state to focus on spending it the way that we're asking them to. So that would be my only difference, if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, so, so not including specific language that says support of the resiliency bond?
Everything else looked great, just take out support of it.
And just to add, as the year goes, there will probably be some curveballs thrown, legislation we didn't expect, or just changes at the state or federal level. We could always come back and amend this document, or if there's any hot topic issues that just come forward, staff will always be ready and willing to bring resolutions separately for the board's, you know, consent. So this is kind of just policy-based, a guide for the year, but knowing that there's other issues that'll come forward that we'll have to tackle later on, we might have to bring them separately, but we'll be ready for that.
Okay, you did a great job on your last platform presentation, Julieta. Appreciate your work. Any additional comments? All right, Chair Luntertin, direction.
I will move to approve with the stated amendments, additions, and deletions.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Please vote. Motion by Crocker, second by Shucklin. All right, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Hope that was very clear for you, Julieta.
It was.
Item 15, board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. Any such requests? Okay, seeing none, I will look over to council. Do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item A is off calendar. B through F will be heard. There may be an announcement out.
Ooh, there may be an announcement. Wait in anticipation. All right. Thank you for attending today's meeting, and I hope everyone has a great day. Meeting is adjourned.